So.
And that's the way they go.
Yeah. Gas and oil. So that was kind of started before me really, a lot of it started. No, it's totally true. Yes. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, yeah.
That's Ian, right?
Ian Williamson. You haven't? He was on the P C A. He introduced himself what, two minutes ago?
You weren't here, that's right.
You had him there. We did the whole everybody, who is everybody spiel in a couple of meetings ago, that's right, you weren't there.
Cool, that would have been nice, huh? It's not super hot, though.
Ian Williamson, he was on the C A, and we pushed him forward to the planning commission.
Oh, they put it down.
What am I waiting on?
What's what?
That board.
It wasn't.
Then it went back down.
I don't know, but then that's not tell us.
I don't know. Uh, hard copy.
Yeah, yeah, homemade those teeth. No. This close, actually, so close.
Peter was updating like four hours ago.
Oh, yeah, we came very close, actually, that's so funny. Start marketing this.
He'll figure out something else to do with the building.
Well, we pour them, right? We pour them to start without it, right?
We're good. Are you ready?
I'm always ready.
He's ready.
You're ready?
I'm ready.
Okay. I call to order the Ferndale Planning Commission of April fifteenth, twenty fifteen, uh, roll call, please.
Commissioners desire? Here. Baker, Brazen, Farr.
Here.
Tiana.
Here.
Timrowski.
Here.
Patrino.
Here.
Williamson.
Here.
Rodiger.
Here, and we have a note that Brazen is on her way and, uh, Baker is excused, correct? Do we need a motion to excuse, uh, Baker?
I make a motion to excuse, uh, Fisher Baker.
I think we have a motion as part, all's in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close. All right, next up is approval of the agenda, um, there was one clarification under the election of the officers, I believe that's vice chair. Is it a co-chair?
I thought you might like a co-chair.
We can have a co-chair.
You can trade off.
Or whoever the new chair may be. So.
I've been doing this since I've been here.
Yeah, so we'll, uh, go ahead and make that change to vice chair to nine B. Any other modifications to the agenda? Can I take a motion to approve the agendas, uh, edited?
Make a motion to approve the agendas edited. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. All right, next up, we have minutes from the March eighteenth meeting. For people to chance to go through and look at those, do we have any, um, edits, modifications, otherwise I look for a motion to approve as submitted.
I've got a change. I'm both present and absent in the minutes, so I think I was absent.
I think you were.
I think I was too.
Okay. We'll clarify that Patrino was indeed absent at that meeting.
I didn't want to cheat and say it was.
Any other modifications? Otherwise. Is there a motion to approve as amended?
I move to approve as amended.
Support.
We have a motion of support, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, those minutes have been approved. All right, tonight we have three public hearings on our agenda, um, if anyone's in the public here wishes to speak at the public hearing, uh, what we'll do is we'll briefly introduce the topic here at the staff level and if there's an applicant, and then we'll open it up to the general public. We ask that you step up to the podium, state your name and address, and limit your comments to about three minutes, we'll take your comments in, it's not a question and answer, it's more about us to hear your comments, and then we will address the comments up here at the board level, um, as we see appropriate. So, with that, let's start, uh, the first item is a public hearing for a special land use for medical marijuana facility at nine three zero East Lewiston.
I'm just gonna quickly say and then turn it over to Michelle that, uh, this is an item that's been into the planning commission on at least one occasion before, I believe two, um, they've made significant changes, uh, since the last time they were here, and, um, Michelle Posture from our department's gonna walk you through, um, what's been accomplished since the last time they were here.
All right, thank you.
Hi, Michelle. Hello. Um, yes, so we have the applicant here for Cana Gardens, um, as Derek said, we saw them in December, and they were asked to be tabled, um, to be able to supplement their app, um, application, they are seeking tonight a special land use approval and site plan approval. Since the December meeting, the applicant has met with, um, staff, the city attorney, and the chief of police, and we've discussed many of the concerns that we've had with their previous site plans and business operations plan, and they have since amended. You have received, um, the business, updated business operations plan, uh, we apologize for sending that on Monday, but, um, we have redlined versions, so you can see that the main changes mostly were, um, that the facility would not be open to the public for one, and some kind of minor issue, um, kind of text changes to make it more applicable to all the zoning, um, and laws surrounding medical marijuana has have been approved, um, so now the business operations appear to meet all of the local and state applicable laws and ordinances. They have provided a security plan and, um, updated site plans, as you see, the main changes to the site plans were the parking and circulation, which have made big changes, um, there are minor improvements that I talk about in the staff report that may need to be adjusted in terms of the, um, spacing requirements. And there is a dumpster located at the facility but is inside and accessible from the front, uh, loading door.
An applicant here, if you wanna go through your business separations a little first.
Good evening, I'm gonna make this short because I know you don't want to hear from the attorney, but my name is Denise Polachella, I am the attorney for Sea Gardens, I wanted to first thank, uh, the commission for tabling this and for, uh, giving us so much latitude in being able to meet with them and to amend our, uh, plans to meet not only the concerns, uh, of staff and of the chief and the attorney, but also to work with the city personally on their, um, specific questions. I think you'll find tonight that, uh, we have done everything possible to meet with the city's concerns, medical marijuana is a slippery, slippery topic, it is changing nearly by the day right now, and, uh, all I can say is that, uh, I'm gonna stay with my client, I've been doing particularly, uh, medical marijuana business law for six years, and I've been doing transactional law for eighteen. I am active at the state level, as are my clients, in making sure that a regulatory framework is put in place, and I realize that's not completely relevant to this application, but I wanted to make sure and mention it because, uh, it's difficult to know when you're dealing with medical marijuana folks, uh, where they're coming from. These are business people, they're also very experienced in the field, but they're also working every single day right now at the state level with leadership to create a highly regulated, highly safe industry in Michigan. So there is no possibility that our conduct is going to impair our reputation in Lansing because we feel that work is of paramount importance, and we are very much looking forward to working with the city of Ferndale, uh, long-term, and having a great long-term partnership, thank you very much. I'm gonna leave this to the operations managers of the facilities now, I'll be available for comments legally if you have questions, but I'm gonna leave primarily, uh, most of it to the operators, I think Mr. Chris and I are more or less on the same page, so, uh, I'm gonna step away, and if you have any legal questions, I can answer them later, thanks.
How you doing, I'm Terrence Mansour, I'm an, uh, owner of Sea Gardens L C, and if you have any ques- first of all, thank you, uh, for giving us the opportunity today to present to you guys, if you have any questions, please stop me at any time, I'll try to be, be quick if you need me to speed it up, Derek, I'm sure you'll let me know, appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Sorry, what was your name again?
Terrence Mansour.
If you can just maybe walk us through, like, a typical day of your facility, you know, what will be going on, the number of people, the hours, how the operation will run.
Sure, so we, we prepared a PowerPoint for you, kinda just given you, uh, a little breakdown, so if you have any questions in between, just let us know. So, moving forward, um, we are a marijuana patient caregiver facility, we will be providing, uh, alternative, uh, healing practices, health and wellness, uh, marijuana education, um, our, our main focus is to provide a secure neutral place for caregivers and their registered patients to exchange medical cannabis. Um, we are located in one zoning district, uh, we are, uh, we do not lie within five hundred feet of an educational facility, a school, uh, a church, or nursery, so we have been approved there, uh, for sure. Um, hours of operations will be open from eight A M. to eight P M., uh, Monday through Saturday, Sunday from noon to eight, uh, we will not be open to the general public, um, at all, um, in the event that, um, an individual from the public walks in, we will be, we would guide them very professionally on, on giving them some education material, on how do they, they go about becoming a patient or connecting with a caregiver, and then very respectfully execute them out. So we will be, Sea Gardens will be in full compliance with, uh, state law, uh, along with full compliance with, uh, the municipality, as Denise said, it is, it is our goal to set the industry standard for safety and security, um, we will, the entire facility will be properly labeled, um, we will be, uh, we want to be fully transparent with the city of Ferndale, uh, we want you guys to be able to, to walk in, uh, unannounced, uh, if need be, and notice that everything is labeled, so, uh, being unaware, you guys can identify what you're walking into at all times. So, we will have, uh, a maximum of five caregivers in the facility, three of those caregivers will be cultivating on site, uh, one of the caregivers will act as management, and another will act as, uh, director of education and, uh, upfront concierge, uh, if you will. The total number of patients that will be, uh, able to visit the facility in one day would be twenty-five, and that's all by appointment only, so there'll never be a point where, uh, a patient, that, there's twenty-five patients at one time, and it's just a chaotic mess, that, that won't happen, so it'll be strategically, uh, planned out. So, just to break down the, the caregiver and patient visit, it'll be a one-on-one with the patient when they come in, um, with their caregiver and their caregiver only, they'll be able to walk them through the process, how to properly use, how to properly, uh, medicate with their medicine, and given the instructions on how to properly transport it, uh, when leaving the facility. Um, all patient intake will be monitored, so we will have, uh, what, what Sea Gardens does is monitor patient intake, so we're able to identify what's working for the patient, what's not working for the patient, um, some are unaware of, uh, certain, uh, applications that may help them out where we educate them on it and, and, and give them a better understanding of how it works, so. By the way, that, uh, I apologize, just going back, that P O S, uh, and software will be available to the city and law enforcement whenever they'd, they'd like to see it. So day-to-day operations, there'll be a director of education and concierge, they'll, they'll handle all of our appointments, all the patients coming in and out, all their, uh, their documents, they'll conduct any seminars, uh, that the patients are gonna need with the caregiver and any just administrative work. The manager will oversee the entire facility, uh, to ensure that everybody in the facility is staying compliant in the event that, uh, the, the city, uh, lets us know that something has changed and we have to, uh, adjust and adapt, we will. Uh, caregivers, they, they will cultivate on the facility and assist the patient in the proper use and, and application of the medicine, there will be no medicating on-site whatsoever, that will not happen, uh, we don't, uh, want that, we don't, we don't, we don't believe in that, that any medicating should be done in the privacy of their own home, so. Moving forward, all patients', um, medicine will be stored in separate lockers, um, that is tagged to them and them only, uh, the only access that, uh, to that locker would be that patient's caregiver and that patient alone. All medicine in stored in the lockers will be monitored by security in which, uh, the municipality and law enforcement will have access to at any time. So, moving to, to cultivation, three caregivers will be cultivating, um, they will have no more than five qualifying patients, um, who are registered with the state, each facility will be separately locked, owned, and subleased by that caregiver. So no, a- at, at any point, the only access to that room would be the caregiver and the caregiver's patient, and that's it. Every caregiver will, will cultivate no more than twelve plants per patient, and every cultivation facility will be monitored, and all that footage will be accessible to the municipality and to, uh, Chief Collins, uh, whenever, whenever need be, so. Moving forward, all caregivers will be cultivating organically, uh, to ensure the medical quality of the medicine, we'll be using M-three Michigan-made soil, um, it's a, it's, it's a soil-based medium that only calls, uh, for water to be added, so that, we will, we will not be infusing the plants with any type of chemicals whatsoever besides adding water. Um, the only, and in the event that there's any excess water runoff, it'll be boiled and evaporated. So, all plants will be thoroughly inspected for mold and pesticides, ensure, uh, the growth and the medicinal value, uh, we, we, we do want to make sure that, uh, you know, the patients that, that we do, um, assist are patients in truly need it, we want to make sure that we are able to provide medicinal-grade quality to them. All harvesting will be done on-site, um, in the cultivation facility, completely separate, uh, from the consultation area, where, uh, nobody but the caregiver, uh, has access to. Uh, the plumbing, electrical will all be, uh, separate, uh, from the facility as well, excuse me, all caregivers involved in the process of the cultivation will be properly identified with badges displaying who they are, so in the event, um, you guys want to come and do a walkthrough, everybody will be, um, easily identifiable, so if you come in, you'll know, uh, if they're a caregiver, what room they're assigned to, uh, it, it'll be, it'll be easy to, to identify. Um, all medicine is currently deemed unusable, not ready or current, will be stored in a separate secured room, so that medicine that is, uh, curing or, or, um, that, that is not ready for use will be locked away, and there will be no access to it by anybody but that caregiver, um, and they, each caregiver will have their own safe for their own medicine, that only they have access to, that is monitored, and that, that footage will be accessible to the city as well. And in the floor plan, I don't know if I can real quick. This, here, is where it'd be locked and secured, and so each one will have their own separate safe. So there was a keypad entry here, also into the facility, it'll be one caregiver, caregiver at a time, each with their own safe.
So is that the only room, I'm trying to understand, looking at, I have a floor plan actually up here too, so you have immediately, um, right of that, you have a cultivation work area?
Yeah, so, so, right here, this will, um, things such as, uh, the soil, having to, to probably have to put it in the, uh, in the pot, and then it'll be moved.
So marijuana will only basically be stored in this product storage safe room?
Will only be stored there, absolutely, so it, it, no, no marijuana will be anywhere else except in here.
At any ti- well, at any time? Except for?
At any, at any time.
What about the grow?
The plants.
Right.
Yeah, so the, the plants will be in processing, these rooms here.
Okay, and those five rooms?
Uh, so it, it's safe, so each room, each caregiver has two rooms, one for the medicated state and the one for the flowering state.
Okay.
Okay, so, say each one here, and then this here is where all the medicine will be locked, secured, and only that caregiver will have access.
Now, getting access to the cultivation area, is that like a big sliding door? Does, on the?
Yeah, so that is a, it's a fenced door, and every, it could also be keypad entry, so every, every caregiver will have their own keypad, number that we know who went in at what time, and that'll all be monitored through our security system.
So to get to the areas where medical marijuana are, you have the keypad fence, and then are the individual rooms where the vegetative and flowering states are, are those keypad entry as well?
Yeah, so every, in fact, every door, any aggressor or, or egress is all keypad, throughout the facility.
So to get to these rooms, there's a minimum of three keypads, cause then there's?
So the one caregiver would have the keypad to this, this room, and then the, yeah, the second caregiver would have it to this room, and this room.
Right.
And then the third will be from this room, and they're the only ones who have that.
Right, and then even to get to that area, you have the keypad before that for the big sliding door, and before that, you have probably another keypad, right?
Yes.
So there's at least three keypads?
Absolutely.
To get, is there?
And, and there, there's actually four, because here to go into the cultivation area, they'd have to come, this is the only entrance to the cultivation, so a keypad from here, through the gate, and then into the.
What about the door at the, uh, south-east corner of the building? Uh, no, down, yep.
Absolutely, so every, all, every, every entrance or, and or exit has a keypad entry, and it's all different to every caregiver, actually, to everything that is all in the, in the facility, so we get to monitor, monitor that and to know who's going in where and which, again, we want that transparency, you know, if you ever call for that.
Oh, sorry, through the chair.
Yeah, sure.
So does every patient also have their own keypad or key code, or how is that working with the patients coming in and out?
So if, if a patient coming in and out, they'll obviously be checked in, and then their caregiver will come to their consultation room, and they'll have a one-on-one, now, this here, the, the consultation room.
Is that gonna be on the record?
Yeah.
Now, the caregiver has their own, or excuse me, the patient has their own locker in that cultivation, that's theirs. One thing that we addressed was a patient, we're gonna have to set up a time, their caregiver has to.
So the caregiver will be there at all times, okay, okay.
So is there any time where the patient or anyone would ever go back in the cultivation area other than the caregivers?
Not at all, not at all.
That area is only exclusively for the caregivers?
Correct, now, if the, if the patient, which they have the right to, in, in the event they want to.
Excuse me, gotta get him on, uh, back on the mic.
So in the event the, the patient wants to see their plants and see what's going on, they will be escorted by their caregiver, and, and by their caregiver only, and that'll be by appointment based only. Did I answer that?
Yeah, before we move on, do you have any other questions about the floor plan while it's up and?
Through the chair, um, where does the processing occur, I mean, after, where does the harvest occur?
So every harvest occurs in that caregiver's flowering room, so it ne- it never, it never leaves that flowering room, so the whole process and, and, once it's, it's cut down, it'll, it'll be trimmed, and then it moves into the storage room as it's curing, and it stays there.
And what about the waste?
So all the waste, it will be shredded, and it'll be in its own tamper-proof, uh, garbage, where we would put into the dumpster that's in the facility, and then, uh, once we, we figure out the time of pickup, that's when we would actually escort it out, take it out ourselves.
So just to, to, sorry to be redundant, but just.
No, you're fine.
Surely understand, so the cultivation work area, there'll never be marijuana in that area?
Not, not at all.
That's for soils and?
Absolutely, not at all, not one bit.
I might, sorry, I might be missing something, so there are the three consultation offices, but you said that there'll be five caregivers, so where's the other two consultation offices?
So the other two.
Or how does that work, sorry?
The other two are, are, are just, uh, acting as management and, and, uh, receptionist or concierge in front, yeah, so they, they will not be, um, at any, any time consulting more than three there, so if, in the event that they, they're gonna have a, a patient, they would use one of the consultations that aren't being used at the time.
Okay.
Correct.
Right.
Yeah, so just to be clear, there are five caregivers total there, and three of the caregivers are cultivating on site.
Okay, but all five caregivers can have patients, right, that they?
They can, correct.
So, yeah, so I guess my question was just, what if all five have like an appointment at the same time?
That will not happen.
That won't happen?
That will not happen, yep, we, we will, we will assure that.
Okay.
Absolutely.
So through the, sorry, just the, so the consultation rooms aren't assigned to one caregiver, they're just meeting rooms that whoever has an appointment, they go to wherever one's open?
Right, and, and, and the reason being, if, if I can step back. Is because some patients have special needs as far as, uh, little tier accessible, so some of the consultation rooms are bigger than others, so, I'm sorry, so some of the consultation rooms are bigger than others where, uh, you never know what could happen, maybe your patient has, uh, crutches one, one time or whatever, so we want to just make sure that, uh, the rooms are, can accommodate space.
No, no, it's, um, so for the two non-cultivating caregivers, where are they bringing the product in and how is that process facilitated?
Thank you, uh, for, so our patients of those caregivers, they will not be at this facility, the only patients that are gonna be allowed to, to get their medicine are the ones that are cultivating, that's all we want there, so the, they're just gonna be caregivers for, for, uh, legality reasons, um, right now, uh, patient-to-patient chances are illegal, so we want everybody on that facility to be all caregivers, and it's just gonna ensure our safety, uh, for, to comply with state law. So, but there, there, there will be no, no point where the two, uh, caregivers and management and, and the concierge will have their patients there.
Just, and follow-up then, can a caregiver give out to other caregivers' patients?
Not at all.
Okay.
Not one bit, so that caregiver will be assisting their patient and their patient only.
One more que- sorry, and how long are these appointments, how long does it take for the transfer to occur between the caregiver and the patient, so how long do you expect each person to be on site?
In our experience, it's never been more than an hour, okay, we give them that, we don't want them rushed, um, you know, when they're there, they're nervous, they, you know, they, they, they want to be able to understand how to use it and, and just everything, we don't want them leaving, uh, with, with any questions unanswered, so, so we give them their time. And there's never gonna be a, a, a point where, uh, twenty-five patients are coming in one day.
Right.
You know, it's.
That's just what you can accommodate?
E- exactly.
Okay.
Through the chair, you mentioned earlier that you were gonna have, uh, uh, software, uh, and you were gonna have security footage and things along these lines that you would make accessible to the city and to the police department if necessary, have you taken steps to ensure that you can provide that level of transparency without violating HIPAA with respect to the patients?
A- absolutely, in fact, in our business plan, the one, um, okay we have to get is from our patients, and, and we, we'll get a consent, a- as long as our patients will sign off on it, we'll have those consent forms for you guys already available.
Great. Through the chair, one quick question hopefully, you, five at all times, or that's the most staff that'll be?
The most staff, i- in the event we need to have, um, assistance as far as, um, cleanup or, or maintenance that we may have in there, it won't be no more than eight.
Eight, gotcha.
Okay, yeah, just so, so you, we're gonna have people coming in and do, and do cleanup and everything like that, so, but it'll never be more than eight.
So three caregivers, concierge, and a manager, that's a normal, that's the standard of what?
That'll be the standard.
And then as for security, there won't be anyone generally as a security as their main?
Correct.
Position, okay.
Absolutely, yeah.
Right, I'm sorry, that was, so there will or will not be a separate security person?
No, 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 I'm sorry, there, no.
Okay.
Yeah, there will be separate security insured and bonded.
Okay, thank you, okay, explain that, okay, so in addition to the five, there will be, sorry, I apologize, I want to make sure, that's why I asked the question.
That question confused me.
Did too, yeah, my question was probably not clear, so there will be, in addition to those five, a?
A security personnel on, on site, yes.
Gotcha, and in that, in the fo- floor plan, where do you see? He or she?
Right here.
Yeah, that's, that's, as they come in?
Yep, as they come in, making sure the day of, all the documents on, and then you see here, this is our security officer, all the monitoring, and, and, on site also, as well as off-site.
Gotcha, okay, I think I got it.
Okay.
Hold on. So, uh, curing and, and stores, I, I think we, we, we went through the.
Sorry, you jumped in a little bit.
No, that's fine, that, I understand, um, but, again, it, it will be, uh, accessible to the police chief, and will be monitored twenty-four seven. So we addressed waste, but I'll, I'll address it again, uh, there will be no waste, everything will be shredded, nothing will be, um, taken outside for the public to get a hold of, it will be, be escorted out once, uh, the pickup day is, is, is there.
So you mean you'll, explain what you mean by that, so on garbage day, you will?
We will actually, any, 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 any of the waste that's there, um, we will, will, it'll be fully shredded, it'll go into its own, its own, you could say garbage, and it'll be tamper-proof, and then once pickup day comes, we will actually walk out. Take it out and actually see it go into the truck.
Okay, so you're not putting up an hour before?
Not at all.
Right as the truck is?
Right as, as the truck is there, yeah. So improvements to the exterior of the building, um, we'll be, um, restriping the lot, we'll be putting parking blocks in place as well. Um, we'll be, um, restriping the lot, we'll be putting parking blocks in place as well. Um, we'll be putting shrubs, um, I can put, do you guys have it there? If you guys wanna see it, I can point it out. We're putting shrubs in the front of the building, a bike rack, and then exterior lighting will be attached to the brick wall.
So if you guys see here, this is the front end of the building, this will be the bike rack at the entrance, this will be on the strip. And the whole, it'll be restriped and there'll be parking blocks as well. Questions there?
I, I'm assuming you received the site plan comments from staff, um, in terms of removing the bumper blocks?
Yes.
Are you sure?
Right, because I, 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 I don't think they're even, even there.
We sent the staff report when I was there?
Uh, the blocks on there. On that one.
There were some comments from the staff report about redesigning, um, the parking spaces and circulation, um, some of the ones that Michelle briefly addressed at the beginning of the meeting. So I wanna make sure that you guys are aware of what those conditions are.
We, uh, I apologize, we, we were, we were assuming that they, they needed to be in play, but we can, we don't have to put them in, we can easily remove them. No problem, actually. I apologize about that.
That's fine.
Any other questions on the exterior?
Not at the time.
Um, as far as the interior, it'll just be painted and fully furnished. Um, all the, the cultivation rooms will be twenty by sixteen, fire-rated doors and walls, five-eighths firewall inside, uh, for, uh, of the facility, but no major changes inside. So, um, all parking spots, they'll be restriped, we will be not, we will not be adding any parking blocks. Uh, we have a total of twenty-five parking spaces, two handicap spaces will be available, and we have twelve exterior lights surrounding the building, three on each side.
Getting to the parking and just kinda going back to the site plan comments that are in the letter. And so, based on your, um, explanation of the operation, let's say you have eight staff there all at once.
Right.
And you have, let's say each caregiver has two patients there, cause they're overlapping, you know, one's coming, one's going. I can't see needing more than twenty spaces per se. And the ordinance, I guess it seems like you're exceeding ordinance requirements, and the city staff has made comments about removing the parallel spaces along the south.
And, and.
Which is twenty-one through twenty-five?
Yeah, so we have, if, if I'm not mistaken, in, in the, uh, in the recommendation, it was, uh, no more than, or twenty-five spaces were needed. So what we did was change it, I think that the old clients had somewhere thirty-five parking spaces. Um, so in, in the event, all staff would be parking on this side of the building here, and then this leaves for all patients on here. And even, even if need be, the staff will be parking here. It'll, it, it, it shouldn't have, there should never be an interruption because of our, our scheduling as far as appointments go.
Yes. So I'm not sure if you've seen the, the staff report, actually I asked you before the meeting, and you said you haven't seen the staff report. But, um, after further review of your updated site plans, um, we suggest that, to the planning commission, that they ask you to remove the bumper locks for one. Um, and then the, um, the parallel spaces along the west wall of the building are a bit too, um.
I do apologize if I was.
Not long enough? But then also, we don't have, you don't have to have twenty-five spaces, so we just recommended, uh, removing those spaces based on the spacing requirements and their zoning ordinance. And.
Thanks for that clarification, I think that's, was that it?
Mm-hmm.
I'll.
I apologize.
And I think there is also confusion bef- I think we actually asked them to, um, we said that they require more parking spaces with the old site plan and with the new.
I'll just, okay. Yeah, so it appears that you can move some parking spaces to address concerns and still have adequate spaces for what you need and, and still meet ordinance.
All right, so landscaping, uh, all the lawn and landscape will be irrigated, uh, damaged and destroyed lawn areas will be sited. Um, all the landscape will be mounted and edged with, uh, der- derotube metal edging, I think that's, uh, that's in the site plan as well. And, um, perennials will be mulched, and twenty new shrubs will be planted, I think I showed you guys, uh, that there. And, uh, I think they are burning bush?
Shrubs?
Yeah, just to be sure. So our security system, uh, communicates with the central station through a telco line, will run twenty-four hours even in the event of a power loss. So we'll make sure all that footage is, is, is still maintained after, after, uh, power is, is lost. Panel system will be enclosed in a steel enclosure with a keyed lock to prevent tampering. Um, that's very important. So the alarm, it's a sixteen-channel DVR that records for thirty days on and off-site. All data is backed up to a network hard drive to preserve the data, uh, for an additional hundred and twenty days. So we're, we'll, in, in the event something was to happen, the footage will be there already available. All cameras are equipped with the vandal-proof domes, um, they're also viewable from any smartphone, tablet, or PC, and are equipped with infrared viewing for nighttime viewing. Security will be insured and bonded, security personnel will be on-site at all times. Uh, security will be positioned at the front door to greet the patients and to check their proper identification. Um, all patients must have their Michigan Medical Marijuana Patient Card and/or sufficient paperwork, um, that, that, no matter what. Or if the patient does come, we will make sure that they, we'll have to send them back to make sure they have their documents on them. Um, all security personnel will be required to walk to the facility inside and out periodically. So making sure that, uh, everything is, is, is checked, there's not gonna be a time where one keypad entry is not working. We're gonna make sure that, that's always monitored. So the keypad entry, there'll be thirty-two keypad entries, uh, one on every door in the facility. Every door has a fail-safe electronic lock that will remain locked in the, in the event of a power failure. A proximity reader can unlock the door when necessary. Uh, all personnel will be assigned a unique access, uh, key and number, and I think I clarified that. So we thank you. Uh, we're all set, we do appreciate your guys' time, and, and hopefully this was sufficient. If you guys have any other, uh, questions on here.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
I think I wanna open up the public hearing at this time, unless anyone has any burning questions that can't wait.
Can I just make a clarification for anyone in the public that might be interested or unknowing that, um, the, the special land use is contingent upon the business plan that's, has been submitted? So if there are any changes in legislation or, um, in the business plan, um, as requested by the applicant, they would have to come back for another special land use application, and the planning commission would have to review that at that time.
Thank you for that clarification. All right, at this time, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. If anyone wishing to, uh, address the commission on this item, we ask, please step up to the podium and state your name and, yeah, your comments.
I wasn't here originally for this, I'm Marlon Berg, I own property in Ferndale. I have one question. He's talking about the waste. When there's waste to be done, and now it's taken from this room over to a truck and put into that truck. Is it a specific truck that takes care of medical waste? Or is it that our regular trash people pick it up? There are specific companies that will pick up medical waste. I- is that something we should be looking at? It doesn't take much to pull bags out of the back of a trash truck. That's just a thought. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else wish to address the commission?
I'm Ronald Martella, I own the two-two-four-one Hilton. My building is on the corner of Hilton and Lewiston, about two-hundred, three-hundred feet, um, of the, from the, the facility. Have to comment, uh, compliment Sea Gardens, uh, they're very well organized, put everything together. I had a tenant about three years ago who wanted to open up a facility in my building, uh, turned out to be a disaster from day one. They weren't planned, uh, I think the laws were very different at that time. And they certainly have nothing, you know, to, to the, the quality and to the planning that, uh, the Sea Gardens has. As addressing the waste facility, um, this is not considered, what you're coming up with is not considered medical waste. Medical waste comes from human beings specifically. But, but the medical waste in terms of, uh, any sort of, uh, issues with medical waste hauling, this is plant material, it's not medical waste. So I don't think there should be an issue, uh, with that. And by the way, I'm a dentist, so I know a little bit about medical waste and, and disposal. So the, um, I just wanted to compliment them on the, the nice package.
Thank you. Someone else wish to address the commission?
He doesn't have to, Sarah, does he have to do it under the public hearing?
Hello, uh, Tim Collins, I'm the police chief, uh, and I have met with the, uh, with the folks here on several occasions over this matter. And, um, obviously I can't speak to the, uh, legal aspects of it, that's gonna be more of any type of review, uh, would be done through the Oakland County Prosecutor's Office, the sheriff's department. Um, however, the one thing, uh, as far as the police department is concerned, and we've spoken to these folks about this, is that, um, the planning commission has now approved two of these, uh, medical marijuana facilities. This one's a little bit more extensive. Uh, the more that these are being approved, the more that will impact on the police department having to review and to inspect and to, um, spend our time and resources, uh, to make sure that these facilities are operating within the confines of the ordinance. So as we go forward, um, the first one wasn't gonna impact on, uh, uh, my operations so much. Second one, a little more, as, as we go forward, uh, the more of these that are approved, the more that they will impact negatively on my manpower situations.
Thank you. Anyone else that wish to speak during public comment, or public hearing? All right, seeing that, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at seven forty-two, and bring it back to the commission for discussion and questions. To address the comments that were heard, um, correct me if I'm wrong, I guess either applicant or staff, I'm assuming this is gonna be handled through our normal waste haulers? There's nothing special in terms of, on your end, that's required or from the?
Uh, I, I believe their, their intent is, and I'll let them speak, is, is currently our understanding is that they would use a normal waste hauler. Um, none of the waste would be, um, I don't know how to, to quant, or clarify, but would be a THC-laden or.
It would be not.
It's, it's the, it's the spent or leftover materials is the waste. Um, they do have the ability to contract with, or contract with their own private waste hauler if they so choose. Or if the planning commission would rather see some kind of special arrangements to ensure there's no concerns, I'm sure that could be discussed.
Through the chair. With that kind of operation, what is the quantity of waste that you assume? I'm sorry if I missed that when I had to step out.
And, and, and it'll vary, but it's, it's, um, if I had to give an example, it's never gonna be where you have, uh, you need truckloads of, uh, waste. And, and, and the waste is gonna be shredded to, uh, pretty much dust. It's, it's, there's, there's, it, it'll, there's no use for it whatsoever, um, at all. But it, I mean, it, it'll vary, so it's, it's ne- it's never gonna be where you have, um, multiple, uh, bags of, of, of waste. Not at all, that, that won't happen.
Through the chair and follow-up on that, um, what type of machinery are you gonna use? Are you gonna have chippers? And if they are, are they gonna be gas-powered, are you gonna be operating them indoors?
So, so what we would probably do is, is we would contract that company out, um, and, and obviously find one that's feasible to, if we can have it indoors, as long as, if it's gas-powered, we'll make sure that, um, that's, that's, uh, addressed and, and fixed. But, um, it's never gonna be something that, that needs, uh, to have a specific operator or, uh, anything of that nature, so.
Um, in terms of, um, the chief's comments, I think maybe this is more for staff or maybe our attorney, um. So we, we have allowed for this use as a conditional use in our community. And, you know, a lot of time you don't get like credit for being the first one in, and you punish the last guy in. Um, has this been talked about at all in terms of, um, I'm assuming there's the reviews, like, is there any annual review in terms of licensing? Or, or how would that work in terms of fees from the city? Is there a way this can be accommodated, the police, you know, demand on them if they're, if there's a way to structure a fee schedule that would accommodate the chief's concerns?
Through the chair, uh, typically, uh, all licensing fees are looked at annually by the council. And to the extent that there's issues associated with the, uh, the particular costs associated with particular, uh, reviews necessary, that would be something that, uh, should be brought to council's attention when they look annually at the fee schedule.
Through the chair, I have a follow-up question on here, and I think it's relative, uh, relevant. I had some questions about, um, the, uh, rec- vocation of removing the special land use, right?
Microphone, please.
Right, it's.
Couldn't quite hear that.
Um, planning commission can remove or.
Revoke.
Revoke the special land use. Um, if the city has deemed that the applicant hasn't met some of the conditions.
The council can.
The council can. Well, it says that the planning commission, um, uh, has a hearing, and then the recommendation to city council to revoke. Page twelve dash three.
Right, that note. Correct.
Okay, so, um, our police chief has expressed concern of more, um, resources needed to manage these facilities. Um, I was wondering what the, um, impact would be if the facility had multiple crime incidences that would increase the. Is my microphone on?
Yeah, you just need to pull it over.
My mic's too far away. I gotta talk, okay. So i- if there were multiple incidences, um, security incidences at the, um, facility in which the city would have to step in and help address those issues, um, would that be, uh, an element that would be covered under a fee schedule if needed? Or would the planning commission just review, um, those incidences if they were, if they amounted to a, a problem where the staff felt they should come to the planning commission, planning commission? Does that make sense, my two questions? It's a two-parter.
I think it could be bifurcated, and I don't think it, uh, one is exclusive of the other. Uh, to the extent that there, uh, is a pressing concern noted by the, uh, staff, that could be brought to the planning commission's attention to consider whether or not the conditions of the special land use, uh, I just thought you said the planning commission may just to, uh, suggest or, or provide a recommendation to council relative to the revocation of special land use. Uh, alternatively, you know, which it is, uh, is something that staff could consider, uh, with a possible recommendation for amendments to the business licensure, which would provide for some type of stepped fee in the event of, uh, non-compliance. That would be something that could be considered under the regulatory ordinance.
Okay.
Uh, in the future, but that would be something that would, would require further council, uh, legislation with respect to that licensing ordinance.
Okay. I think the chair's brought up some very good points, is having a long-term policy in place to help, um, guide, uh, the number of facilities. And I had a general question for the, the team, just, I was wondering how many facilities there are across Michigan? And which cities are having the most? I mean, Ypsilanti I thought had, uh, medical marijuana. Yeah, could you please?
Before we move on to that, can I, um, add on to the chief's concerns and?
Sure.
The licensing and whatnot.
Sure.
So as part of the, um, recommended motion that we provided in the packet, the staff report, um, one of the findings is that the chief of police is concerned that the site may impose additional service demands and needs to be addressed by staff, um, and that the existing facilities and services beyond police enforcement, uh, the existing facilities and surface, services beyond police enforcement appear to adequately serve the site for the proposed use and does not impose additional service demands at this time, but that those, um, concerns by the police that should be, um, addressed prior to, uh, the city council's approval of the site plan. So we did make that, um, so in, in turn, staff has, um, had conversations about the medical marijuana licensing. There's actually a specific medical marijuana licensing, um, code. And we have internally, I've talked about this kind of at length, about the need to review those, uh, that ordinance and how we license and, that annual review of the license and perhaps the monetary, um, portion of it and how it could service the public services for monitoring, so.
I'm assuming the chief was involved in those discussions?
Yeah, and that's still in process, but, yeah.
And so I guess, looking at the motion that you have in the, in the packet here, so it's condition three, the concerns of the chief of police are addressed by staff. I would add prior to consideration by city council, if that wasn't clarified in the motion.
And, and through the chair, I'd like to add that, um. And through the chair, I'd like to add that in addition to the special land use approval, and this is something that is outside of the Planning Commission's purview, there is a license requirement, it's an annual license. And as part of this review, we have had internal discussions and plan on hopefully helping address some of the chief's concerns by looking into the fee associated with that license. It was looked at originally when the license requirements were established. I don't know if that fee will be changed between now and when this license is reviewed and considered after the council approval. It could be, based on council's review at the time of this, if this is successful and moves forward. But we do intend to address potential costs to the Police Department through review of that fee and the fee schedule associated with the license, because it is able to be adjusted on an annual basis.
Thank you for that clarification. Now to get back to address Councilwoman Piana's question about other facilities in Michigan, I guess, anyone who knows, obviously, stepping up for the mic.
I am. Seven in Ypsilanti, although they capped it at six, right, Dan? They did cap it at six after the seventh opened. And so that's available to you to cap it per population or resources. Nine in Ann Arbor, although the Ann Arbor ordinance specifies that they will approve 10% more than the number of applications that were taken. They don't know how many that is right now, but currently in Ann Arbor, nine. Approximately, the 18th one just was approved in Flint. I understand, I know Flint sort of has a little bit of a reputation, but they did, after a proliferation of dispensaries started opening in Flint, they issued a moratorium, put an ordinance in place, and now are going through the process of doing those. There is a few smatter around Oakland County. There's one in Walt Lake, there's one in Warren, there are a few here and there, but the concentrations, yeah, there are no dispensaries in Commerce Township, they're all grow facilities. But there are smatterings in Oakland County, there are a million of them in Detroit. There are more dispensaries in Detroit than I think maybe there are people. Detroit's got a big problem on its hands. And one of the reasons that we're so happy to be working with Ferndale, and so, and I'm personally so pleased with Ferndale, is the reason you don't have a proliferation of unlicensed, unregulated businesses here is because you took the proactive measure of zoning it. Detroit is doing nothing, and they're reaping the penalties and the problems of that, unfortunately. And no one's happy about that. We're working hard to encourage the city of Detroit to put a moratorium in place or do something. Very, very few, there are three in Traverse City, one in Montrose, two in Vienna Township. There are probably 30 to 40 total in Genesee County, but the main concentrations are in Genesee County, Washtenaw County, and Wayne County. And the concentration of them in Wayne County is in Detroit. The hard part, of course, is that there has been no state regulation since 2008. So every city, quite literally, all 1,900 of them, have dealt with this in a different way. And I think that's why we're working so hard to get a state-level response, so that cities will have some clarification on how to go forward. I want to make one brief comment about the chief's concerns. We share his concerns. We in no way want to negatively impact the community. We want to be partners with the community. And because we are having a 24-hour centrally monitored alarm system, onsite security, video monitoring, we're hoping to make his job easier, not harder. So if there's anything that we can personally do to assist with that, certainly we'd be glad to. As far as the attractive nuisance of any leftover marijuana stocks, they're stalks, they're shredded, they're completely unusable, and they're held in the dumpster inside the facility until a garbage truck picks it up. So they're completely useless to anybody. They could never be taken and used for any purpose other than maybe, you know, garden dust. So not an attractive, useful, attractive nuisance at any point.
And follow up for the question about how many facilities there are. Are there other facilities that the people involved with this operation have been involved with?
Yes. In Detroit and Montrose mainly.
So there's two other facilities that are with this model, this business operation plan, or are they different?
They're slightly different. I mean, you do have to remember that there is no uniform enforcement at all of the Medical Marijuana Act in Michigan. So what I can tell you is that they're operating within the Medical Marijuana Act, but there's very little enforcement of it. The Genesee County prosecutor was very clear when the Medical Marijuana Act came out that he was, had no interest in enforcing medical marijuana crime or medical marijuana issues. I don't, I haven't seen the Wayne County prosecutor do a thing. So because of those attitudes, the attitudes of law enforcement and the communities in those counties is somewhat less restrictive. We understand fully that we're in Oakland County. But what I will say is nobody involved with this business has been in any sort of law enforcement trouble. So we've been good community partners wherever we've gone.
So you said there's one in Montrose and one in Detroit that you're currently under?
Mm-hmm.
Where's the one in Detroit located?
There's one on Grand River and Seven Mile and where's the, where's?
Seven.
Seven and Telegraph.
Oh, there's two in Detroit?
Two in Detroit. The one in Montrose is former, the, we started the one in Montrose, but we're no longer involved in that one.
And the one in Detroit, or Seven and Telegraph and?
Seven and Grand River.
Seven and Grand River.
Yeah, we're working directly with the city of Detroit and Councilman Tate to try to get something in place, because we're not happy with the situation in Detroit either. We'd like to see maybe 30 or 40 dispensaries in Detroit total, retail facilities. And right now, there are upwards of 100. It's a terrible situation.
All right, thank you.
I have a quick question. How long have those operations in Detroit been going? And what's the scale compared to this? So I know that you're saying?
All of them or?
Well, how long have they been involved?
Couple of years.
Yeah.
And also, I want to, I want to remind the commission, the Medical Marijuana Act has been a roller coaster ride since 2008. For the first four, three, four years, it was widely presumed by most people that dispensaries were legal. The state of Michigan couldn't make up his mind. The state of Michigan actually created a presentation on dispensaries and then pulled it back. So it's been, you know, yes, you can sell to any patient, no, you can't sell to anybody, yes, it's nonprofit only. The act has gone through so many, not the act itself, but the enforcement of the act has gone through so many changes, all at the case law level. So there hasn't been any regulatory clarification, there hasn't been any clarification from the administration, it's all case law. So the law's been doing this. So I'm going to say very generally that we've been adapting with and abiding by the law as it exists from day to day. There are, right now, five Supreme Court, well, Tuttle, Hartwick, there are three Supreme Court cases pending on marijuana, two more going off the fly of the pole. The Supreme Court's inundated with case law, so daily, I'm getting updates. It's that crazy. So we're very involved at the state level, trying to get a regulatory structure in place so we can stop taking the roller coaster ride with the court system. But all I can say is that we have done our very best to abide by what is currently the medical marijuana law, whenever that is.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Just to clarify, and maybe I'm just confused, so total, right now, how many growries, dispensaries, businesses is Sea Gardens involved in?
Two dispensaries, not including this one, I'm sorry. Two in Detroit. The one in Montrose is what, it was, it was a nonprofit started by Mr. Ratliff and another friend of his, who's the director of that now. So that was started several years ago. It's still going. It's a model up there, actually. They work directly with the police. It's a great, it's a great place.
What's it called?
Hardcore Harvest.
Three, two?
No, two. The Montrose one is still in the past. So the two in Detroit, right now, so.
Did you have a question? Yeah, I did. Just a, I'm sorry, I can't read. It says on the application that you and Mr. Ratliff live an hour and a half, almost two hours away, in North Branch. It also says you're Laura Ratliff.
Oh, that's, no, I'm.
Okay. So is Michelle Whitney live near here?
She lives in Elmont.
Okay. So you guys are all accessible about an hour and a half away if there was an incident.
He's originally from, yeah, I was raised in Ferndale.
Oh, okay. It's just you're just.
I actually, well, I'm also an owner of Sea Gardens. I actually live in Stonehenge, it's on about 15 minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Through the chair, very good. So why Ferndale? If it's so much easier to, and there's so much lack of jurisdiction going on in Detroit, why Ferndale for you guys?
Well, one of the main reasons why we chose Ferndale is because you guys actually took the steps forward to actually put an ordinance in play and put something that is, it sets you apart from other municipalities that haven't taken no action. For us as a business, we hold ourselves to a high standard. And by being able to prove our worth and our reputation and what we do in Ferndale, working hand in hand, it's going to position ourselves when our legislator actually gets these laws to the way it should be. And we want to be able to position ourselves to be looked at as the ones that have been doing this right. And that's why we want full transparency, and that's why we chose Ferndale, because you guys took the initiative, much as this company does. And being able to, you know, execute an ordinance properly is going to not only make Ferndale look good on actually, our whole thing is, we know how we operate, we do it at a level above others, you know, obviously, it's in my opinion. But we want to prove that to Ferndale, and in doing so, it's going to, it's going to make it a lot easier in educating our legislator on doing the same.
Just a final comment. I just wanted to say thank you for working with us. Every applicant we have, we spend a significant amount of time talking about it, because something has changed and we need to adjust, and we learn more. So I appreciate you taking.
You're welcome.
Under due diligence with the staff. I mean, you still have to go to council.
Sure.
But thank you.
And we thank you guys for working with us. We greatly appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Yeah, I know at our last meeting, this topic came up, you know, there's a lot of question marks, and so I know you guys have gone back and provided that additional information, which I think at least personally makes me feel more comfortable knowing what was going on, whereas before, there was a lot of unanswered questions.
And that's what we want. We want you guys to be able to turn to us, and we want to march through this thing together. We are fully transparent. We have nothing to hide. So we want you guys to want us here.
Okay. Just to clarify with staff, I know we had the public hearing, but we didn't receive anything written, or you didn't receive any calls, or people from the owner on this topic?
Did you get anything, Michelle?
Not since the last public hearing, but we did hold a public hearing in December in which Gary Aronut came to the stand, if you recall.
Yeah.
No, we've, and we haven't, as a department, received anything in writing or any phone calls either.
Gotcha. Okay, just wanted to clarify that. Are there any other questions or comments from the commission?
I had a question just for staff, and I think you've answered it back in December. Has there been any complaints of existing facilities since then?
We don't have one open at this time. We have two that are approved, we have one that's received a building permit, and another one that has a site plan and special land use approval, but has not submitted for build-out yet. So not, we don't, we do not have a facility open in the city at this time.
Any other questions from the commission? Did you have a question?
One quick question. They said there were public hearings. I have a business here and I live here, and I didn't hear anything about public hearings. I wonder what kind of announcement is going out?
And I can clarify, staff, the ordinance requires us to notice it in a paper of record, which has been done on two occasions now, and then in, a paper of record, the Tribune, a public hearing, which is where the city notices all its public hearings. And then we're also required by ordinance to notify all business owner of residence and properties within 300 feet of the location. And those are the requirements we have to stay within.
So the Tribune is the paper of record?
Correct. It's one the city has used for more than a decade now for all of its public hearings. Yeah, and it's, I mean, it's, yeah, it's also available on the website and the Planning Commission agenda and those type of things. But for a public hearing, a public hearing is a specific requirement defined by ordinance, and the notices are defined in the ordinance, and we're obligated to stick within those. So it's a notice in the paper more than 15 days prior to the meeting, and notice of all property owners and tenants within 300 feet.
One side?
Make it quick.
Why don't you go to the Woodward talk this Tribune every house?
Because it's not delivered on a regular enough basis to satisfy the requirements for all the public meetings we hold.
Yeah, there can be further questions, you can talk to staff after the meeting on that. All right, any other questions or comments from the commission? Otherwise, I would look to entertain a motion. Again, we are looking this evening at a special land use, which is a recommendation from Planning Commission to council, and also a separate action on the actual site plan. And, you know, there were a number of comments made from staff on the site plan with a number of conditions that we briefly talked about, and it seems like the applicant is willing to abide by those as well.
I'll move that this time in the matter of 9:30 East Lucian Avenue, the Planning Commission recommended the city council approval with the conditions within addition, or as presented in the packet, with the addition to number three, that it includes the language prior to the city council.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Second? We have a motion and support on the table. Any discussion on the motion? I'm sorry, just a question. So the site plan items that were mentioned will come up during the site plan review? Okay. Okay. So this is just for the special land use? All right, can we have a roll call vote, please? Commissioner Zar?
Yes.
Grayson?
Yes.
Farr?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Rodiger?
Yes.
Tim Ralsky?
Yes.
Patrino?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes, so that'll be going to the next available city council meeting. Have to work with Eric on that. Now on to the site plan. Again, the special land uses usually are tied to a specific site plan. This has been provided. There's questions about the parking is really the main, I think, items that needed to be addressed in terms of the site plan items. Any questions, comments? Otherwise, we'll look for a motion.
I will move that in the matter of 9:30 East Lucian, the Planning Commission approved the site plan as written in the proposed packet.
Do we have support? Second. We have a motion and support. Any further questions, clarifications? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion passes.
She was going to make a reading.
I threw, I threw Derek that way. All right, so congrats.
Thank you.
Derek, can you run it up beyond the city council meeting?
I don't. We're going to have to talk about the licensing fees and some other stuff ahead of time, so I don't have a solid yet.
Okay. Thank you so much. All right, next up, we do have another public hearing this evening. I lost my agenda. We have a public hearing for, I believe, the TOD ordinance, is that correct? The next one? Yes, for the overlay ordinance to allow transit-oriented development. So what's that going to be?
Yeah, I mean, quickly, I'll just, and I'll introduce Michelle again. She's been handling that as staff, but this is an item the Planning Commission has seen several times in the past. We have Michelle Foster from our staff here, who's been the staff person in charge of it. And I also believe Christina Shepherd-Deceus from the DDA is here, who's been a big part of this process and discussion. So I'll turn it over to Michelle to outline where we're at with the ordinance.
All right, thank you. All right, so it's fairly brief with the previous introduction, since I knew that the applicant was going to have extensive presentation, but I'll be a little bit more thorough on this, because I'm sure the audience will want clarification for those of them who've come for the public hearing. So just a little background on this ordinance. It is a Planning Commission-initiated text amendment to the zoning ordinance, following multiple discussions by the commission about development patterns in the city, mostly along Woodward and within the downtown. This is an ordinance amendment based on and following the goals and vision of our master plan, of the downtown development plan, of the Ferndale move's transit plan, the Woodward Avenue Transit Oriented Development Corridor Study, the Woodward Avenue Rapid Transit Alternatives Analysis, and many other plans that have been actually, like, studied and approved throughout this geography. So Derek, you have a little brief history, but I'll kind of go over it in a little bit more detail. We looked at this proposal, I believe, first in June at the Planning Commission. We talked about this probably, most extensively at that June 12th commission meeting. Then August 5th, the city and staff met to discuss the density and height requirements. That was a meeting that was facilitated by Mark Nikita, and we talked about design guidelines throughout the city. throughout the city. And October 15th, the Planning Commission was presented with a draft overlay ordinance that was written by the staff attorney and the Planning Commission requested changes. At that time, we, the commission wanted to expand the district from the central business district to include all of Woodward Avenue. On December, we saw it again and asked again for revisions and thought that we could use some input from stakeholders. So in January, the DDA and city staff hosted a stakeholder meeting, which the Planning Commission has received the comments from. And we have since noticed a public hearing for a draft ordinance that has been edited to, to incorporate all those comments from stakeholders from the Planning Commission and from staff. So the ordinance itself, some of the details there, the applicability of this overlay district are for any parcels within the central business district as currently zoned and for all those parcels fronting Woodward Avenue from the city limits, north to south. Any existing building or use would be permitted to continue, subject to those underlying zoning requirements. So buildings that do not conform to the regulations would be able to remain until they request expansion of more than 25% of the existing gross floor area or 3,000 square feet, whichever is less. And then all new buildings within those, within that geography would have to abide by the standards set forth in the overlay. So the, the main effect that this overlay will have is the restriction of requiring a two-story development with a minimum height requirement of 25 feet. There are additional architectural requirements, which were based off the current standards of the central business district and those extended along Woodward for the majority. The overlay will not have any effect on the use requirements or regulations or parking. So for the adoption of the text amendment, tonight we're holding a public hearing. The Planning Commission can choose to move forward the draft ordinance to the city council who has the authority to adopt.
Thank you so much. Any quick questions for Michelle before we open up the public hearing? All right. At this time then, I would like to open up the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the commission regarding the overlay ordinance?
I'd like to ask a question first.
Oh, anybody who wants to speak, when the public podium is open, come to the podium, introduce yourself, name and address, please.
My name is John Fitzpatrick. I live on Jewel Street in Ferndale. And before I can really address the ordinance, you've talked about some of it. I don't know what the ordinance says.
Okay, well, in summary, I think, Michelle, this kind of went over a quick overview of it, but in essence, it requires any new building or any existing building that expands beyond 25% or 3,000 square feet, whichever is less, to have a minimum of a two-story, a two-story building. And there's particular requirements in terms of the aesthetics and entryways and heights that are required as part of that. But the intent is to create additional heights and density along the Woodward and corridor and in any parcel in the central business district, which essentially is nine mile from, what is it zoned, from?
Planavon to Paxton and?
Planavon to Paxton. So it requires all those buildings to have two stories. If it's new construction.
Before I can answer or ask questions, do you have a copy of what the ordinance would actually be?
Yes, the ordinance is provided on, I'm assuming, the city's website. I don't know if we have an extra copy here in the back?
Like, right now, if I could read it somewhere, I would be grateful.
You got a copy, Michelle, or do you want me to give mine?
Please come to the mic and state your name and address.
Marlinburg. I own several pieces of property on Woodward. And I'm not quite sure I understand, it could be dumb as a rock on this one. Is it, you're saying, if I take and add on square footage to the properties that I have now, that I would have to take and make it a two-story building?
If the addition is more than 3,000 feet or 25% of the original building.
Of the original building.
Correct.
But what if the Planning Commission or the building department would say, those buildings can't conform? That's just a question. Couldn't conform because these buildings have been built back in the 50s, 60s and they won't conform to have a second roof or story to it. What do you do about that? This is just a question. I don't anticipate to do a second story. I am, I am, I'm assuming grandfathered in.
Well.
I'm grandfathered in on my properties now. I don't have to add a second story to these. Unless, unless I go to do some remodeling.
Correct. If you're proposing to do an addition, expansion to the building, at that time, the building would be required to be brought up to these standards. If you could not meet those standards, you could go to the zoning board of appeals for a variance request or you could upgrade the building to be structurally sound to be able to accommodate a second story.
So now, how is this going to help Woodward conform when my buildings aren't going to change and some of the other buildings down the road, they're not going to, you know, change, but now you're going to have buildings that are start going like this? How does that help?
Well, the only constant is change, so never say never. But in terms of Woodward, you know, we know there's plans for transit and, you know, other transportation alternatives up and down Woodward corridor. And in order for those to be successful, from a planning standpoint, you need to create density and more mass along those major corridors. And so that's what Ferndale is attempting to do and something that the city has talked about for decades in terms of the vision for the community moving forward.
Again, you're saying that they've talked about this for decades. Have you seen what they've done with our parking? We had parking that was much better than it is now and that was someone's great idea and all it's done is cut down our parking. It's just these ideas that they come up with, are you just picking that from another community that it worked for them? How do we know it's going to work for us?
Okay, at this time, I don't want to get into an ongoing dialogue with you, sir.
I don't either. I just, it's just a question.
If you have, you know, questions specific to this ordinance, we'd be happy to hear your comments.
I'm concerned about that ordinance.
And we will talk about it at, here at the, at the commission level. They is the city and that's, we are the city. And so
Okay.
They're writing ordinances and what we believe are the best interests of, interest of the community.
Are all of you folks, last question, are all of you folks on the internet so we know who you are and what your functions are? Because I haven't met you folks in a long time, so I don't know who you talk to about anything.
You can come talk to me. I'm on city council. I'm the city council liaison to the Planning Commission and we can have a talk about the future of Ferndale.
I'd like to hear that. Thank you.
And if I can through the chair to answer his original question, the job of the Planning Commission is to implement the city's master land use plan. That's a, that's a plan that's, that's adopted through a public process. There's, it goes on every five years. It's about to be redone. And one of the recommendations in that master land use plan is that the city implement ordinances and design standards to increase density along Woodward. Now, all of us individually may have different opinions on how to do that or whether that's the perfect idea along Woodward, but it's adopted as a community and adopted as part of a plan through a public process. The Planning Commission's job is to implement and make recommendation on ordinances to implement that plan, not to have individual opinions or to debate it internally, but to implement that plan that's been adopted and vetted through a public process. This ordinance is a reflection of that desire. That master land use plan process will kick off again here shortly. It's required to be updated every five or so years by state law. It's a process that's defined by state law and we would encourage all of the business owners to participate in it. We have, we struggle every time we go through this to get public participation at that master land use plan step. So all of the planning commissioners can be reached through our office. They're all residents of the community of Ferndale. They're required by charter to have a certain set of skill sets to sit up here and to participate in this process. They can all be contacted through me and my office and I provided our card earlier. City council and Councilwoman Piana is our rep to this board. All of their contact information is available online. Ultimately, this board just makes a recommendation to council on this, on this ordinance. Council is the legislative body of the community and makes the decision on ordinances. So we would encourage you to follow this process through to your legislative board as well, who ultimately makes the decision based on, with input from this board. So that's the process and that's how we get to this point. It's not something that we just look at another community and say, well, we like that ordinance and we grab it and bring it and try to adopt it here. It's something that's vetted through that master land use plan process and then implemented through this ordinance adoption process. So, you're welcome.
Is there anyone else who'd like to address the commission as part of this public hearing? No, just shifting. All right, seeing no other movement, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing on the overlay ordinance and bring it back to the commission for discussion. I'm assuming Derek, we didn't receive any written communication or any further comments from the business community?
Christina, did you receive anything at the DDA office in regards to this ordinance? Formal, any, anything in writing or any calls?
Even email, phone calls?
No, I have not received anything.
Okay.
Michelle, did you receive anything additional?
We had one phone call with someone. We invited them to the meeting.
Okay, well, apparently we got one phone call, asked for some clarification, then we invited them to the meeting.
Gotcha.
But they didn't say any opinion or voice any objection to the ordinance.
And just to remind myself, we invited all of the businesses that were affected, all the properties that were affected by this?
Correct. Again, and I'll go back to the process, according to state law, because it affects more than 10 parcels, we're only required to notice in the paper. But we did take the extra step of noticing all the individual building owners and tenants, I believe. Correct? Is that correct? Yeah. So we did that in addition to make sure everybody was aware of the meeting.
Okay.
One more quick question.
Sir? Yes, one more question.
One more question. It's important.
Am I under the, am I hearing that you're changing some zoning on Woodward also or is our zoning staying the way it is?
This is what's called an overlay district, which means your underlying zoning remains. So if you're zoned CBD or C2 or C3, that remains and this is an overlay district that comes into effect if and when you build a new building or
Only when a new building is done.
Or addition beyond 25% or 30%.
Or extension over 25%.
All right, thanks.
You're welcome. Questions or comments by the commission? No, we've talked about this, I think, quite a bit. And I know we initially started this discussion and wanted something, you know, I think, within a month or two's time and I think we took the time to vet it. I think it was the right thing to do, so I want to thank the staff, you know, putting together that meeting with the business community, you know, that was
Thank you for your patience.
Thank you for your diligence. All right, I guess, open for any questions, discussion, or are we looking for a motion? Again, this is a recommendation to council. Do you know when they would be hearing this if this moves forward this evening?
Based on time frames, I'm guessing second meeting in May, which would be the fourth Monday in May.
Okay, so anyone who's interested in following this, potentially it would be the fourth Monday in May. With that, any questions, comments, or motion?
I'll move that this time that the Planning Commission recommends city council adopt the ordinance and associated zoning text amendments to establish the transit oriented development overlay district with the findings as presented by staff.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have support?
Support.
Okay, we have a motion on the table and support. Any questions, comments, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so it sounds like this item will be forwarded likely to the May 4th city council meeting. Okay, thank you so much. Next up on the agenda this evening, we have another public hearing for amendment to our zoning ordinance and this is to allow for a use variance process. Is that you, Derek?
It is. Again, this is, this is, I won't say a house cleaning item, but this is something we've discussed internally in the past. We took some time revisiting it. It's come up again on a couple of occasions. Again, it's not a project specific driven request, but it has come up as a potential tool that as staff, we have wanted to consider using or recommend in certain situation and not had it available to us. We kind of set it aside after the last discussion. We knew it wasn't something that was overwhelmingly supported, but we continued to have that discussion internally and decided that it was worth bringing back and making a recommendation that we move forward with the use variance amendment. As the Planning Commission is aware, at least the ones that were here previously, our zoning ordinance has the caveat in it that we are prohibited from using use variances as a tool. Most zoning boards of appeals and the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act allows two different types of variances to be considered by a municipality. One is a dimensional or non-use variance that deals with exactly how it sounds, dimensional requirements, setbacks, widths, parking space widths, heights, lot area coverage, anything that has a specific number attached to it. Applicants or property owners in the city can seek relief based on a certain set of criteria from those dimensional requirements under very defined and unique circumstances. The other type of variance that's allowed under the act is a use variance. That would be to allow the Board of Zoning Appeals to consider the allowance of a use in a zoning district that it is normally not allowed in. It would not change the underlying zoning of the district, would not change the dimensional requirements of the district, only allow that very specific use within the district. It is something we've, again, we've talked about as staff. We think it's a tool that is, although rarely, extraordinarily rarely considered, used or recommended, but that it is one that has the potential to provide assistance or be useful in the community at different times. So we are recommending that we amend the text to the zoning ordinance to allow use amendments in the future. As with all text amendments, the Planning Commission is a recommending board. We're asking that you hold a public hearing, consider the amendment and make recommendation to city council how you feel best regarding the situation. So, and then obviously, we're here to answer any questions about it.
Okay. I guess, any questions or comments?
I think I have one. So the, the authority as written is the BZA for use variance?
Correct.
How does that impact, the Planning Commission has no role in that, the way that that's drafted?
The Planning Commission, just like a dimensional variance, would not make comment or hear the variance request. If granted, the Planning Commission still holds all the same authority over site plan and approval that it would over any other use. So they still have the very same control. The only thing that they wouldn't hear is whether the requested use could be permitted in the requested district.
However, the ZBA could impose conditions on the use variance that would be essentially site plan conditions.
Correct.
Correct. So I guess, following, following on the same lines, kind of, I'm curious to hear Ian's thoughts since he was on the ZBA. BZA?
I know, I can't, I'll never get over it.
It's ZBA.
I know, it's a ZBA and I'll never get over it.
I guess, it seems to me that the BZA, since they don't really hear site plans, you know, their role isn't to review site plans, would they find the Planning Commission's input helpful in determining whether or not the use variance would be acceptable? Because similar to special land uses, maybe with certain site plan conditions, the use may be appropriate, but without those conditions, they might not be. And is the ZBA the best board equipped to handle those types of decisions?
Well, through the chairs, as you know, the BZA is charged when considering use variance to apply certain required standards and only in the event that those standards are met is the variance warranted. And so it's really a quasi judicial role for the BZA. And, you know, historically, Ferndale's ordinance did have that use until the last zoning order, just in 2010. And sometimes there's the need, whether or not to require a variance first or get site plan approval first, that's a chicken, I've seen it argued both ways.
Right.
It seems, whether it would be helpful to get, for the BZA tangentially to know where the, where the Planning Commission stands makes sense, you know, as it relates to potential conditions, but those conditions would only be appropriate if the underlying requirements are shown, you know, that the standards are met as it relates to the unnecessary hardship.
Right.
And I would, and to answer the question, and I know you, and I'd like to hear Ian's take on it, he's been on the BZA for a little bit of time now, but from our position, staff, a use variance is so unique and that the criteria are so specific, the BZA is the board that's trained to apply those criteria. That's what they're there for, that's what they're trained for, and it is a quasi-legal discussion. It isn't, in staff's opinion, it isn't the same as a conditional rezoning because you're not changing the underlying zoning districts and dimensional requirements. It's only in the circumstances when those conditions, uniqueness, self-created, substantial justice, those criteria that they're trained to apply to apply are met, that a use variance should be granted. So, in staff's opinion, they are the board that's most able to review those criteria, not change the zoning district, not, you know, mess with the intent of the zoning district, but to review those criteria when in the unique circumstance they're applicable, the BZA is the appropriate place.
Do you want a spot, Ian?
That's alright. It's an interesting issue to come up, because since I have been on the zoning board, we have only done dimensional variances and spent our way for some time now, as you all know. Looking at the proposed legislation here, my initial impression is that any grant of any type of use variance by the BZA, or one requests it, will probably be extremely rare, based on my experience up until this point. And I don't see any reason why that would change. As far as whether this should be an issue that should go before the planning commission first or before the zoning board first, I mean, I can see both sides of that at the same time. I think that if you have a situation where the zoning board has already determined, we think that we would like to grant the variance, at that point, I mean, that's, it's not the final say there. It still has to come before this board anyway, before the project can really move forward. And if there are substantial issues that the commission sees because of the special use, I think it makes sense to address them at that point. So, I would support the legislature, or the legislation that is proposed, but I don't see a lot of situations where, I don't see a lot of situations, frankly, where this is something that would actually be done.
And I think that's the point and the intention, but I think my only point was that, you know, looking at the criteria that the BZA is required to find, you know, harmony with the surrounding neighborhood, and, you know, some of the things are similar to a conditional use, that there may be some site plan recommendations the planning commission could have that could make the use variance compatible with the surrounding properties and things that the ZBA may not be aware of that would maybe change the result of the BZA had they had site plan weigh in by the planning commission. Does that make any sense?
It does. And I can tell you from a staff standpoint, and I can't speak for always and ever, because I, you know, obviously, I'm not going to be here. One, the planning commission should always see the site plan before it goes. And we would strongly suggest any applicant, at least come to the site plan and seek input on the site plan. And two, the BZA should not be placing conditions on a use variance that impact the underlying zoning or the dimensional requirements. Those would be dimensional variances, or would start to fall in the realm of a conditional variance, and we wouldn't recommend they ever approve anything like that. Now, again, I can't sit here and say forever and everything else, but the use variance should not be used as a tool to either alter the intent of the underlying zoning district, or to modify the dimensional requirements. At that point, you are getting into legislating, and you start to move into the territory of a conditional rezoning, and that should be in front of the planning commission. Again, this is only in the most extreme of conditions, when you have a use that maybe fits in the district, but all the other underlying requirements of the zoning district should not change in relation to the adjacent parcels. And in certain instances, that can be important, when you have, when you want to maintain compatibility with the adjacent property owners, properties from a dimensional standpoint, or a ordinance requirement standpoint, but the use may be appropriate for certain reasons. But you don't want to take one piece of property and change all the dimensional requirements in relation to those adjacent to it, which a conditional rezoning can do. And that's our thoughts on it.
Can I ask, through the chair, staff, how many rare and extremely unique situations have you encountered?
I've been, I've been liaisoned to planning, or zoning boards of appeals for 15 years now, and I've never seen a use variance granted. And I've only recommended, I've only processed two in 15 years.
Okay, but you, but not recently, there hasn't been?
Not in the city of Ferndale, no.
Not in the city of Ferndale?
I will say, in all honesty, there's been one instance and one project that we continue to evaluate, that the more we evaluate it as staff, we feel that this would most likely be the appropriate tool to move forward if the planning commission was supportive of the site plan once the use variance was granted. And we've had it here on several occasions, and there appears to be support for the use, but that the conditional rezoning, if rezoned, would require a series of dimensional variances, I believe it's nine, to allow the use to move in and be compatible with the surrounding properties. So, in that instance, instead of granting a conditional rezoning and then having to go for nine dimensional variances, because a conditional rezoning shouldn't lessen the dimensional requirements of the district, allowing just the use in and leaving the underlying dimensional requirements makes a lot more sense. And there is a good chance that this amendment was approved in, for the sake of transparency, that we would recommend approval of it. It seems to make sense in this instance. But that would be the first time in over 12 years of doing this, that we would make that recommendation. So, I know that was a longer answer than you were probably looking for, but...
I know when we've talked about this, when you think you brought it to us in December, maybe, or whenever, I know I had very mixed feelings about it. You know, I know, generally, I think use variances are, but again, they're not very rare, but, I mean, I guess, I think for the sole reason of adding another step for exhaustive remedies for someone who potentially may be aggrieved by the city, it's another reason to have it.
And just, I'm not sure if Derek mentioned it, there is a super majority provision in the text, which requires a higher level of participation in the affirmative for an actual grant of a variance.
Any other questions? I guess we have staff recommendation, or BZA representative recommendation, and if you don't like it, we can always take it out. Went in there and we said it was being abused.
Yeah, if it's being abused, they're using it appropriately, yeah.
Well, abused.
Yeah. So, any questions, comments on the language? Otherwise, we'll look for a motion. And again, this has to go to council still. Has council been, are they aware of this?
We haven't presented it as a public discussion item, but we have been kept them abreast through emails and other updates.
I think they'll need one-on-one time. Education?
Sarah, public hearing.
I recommend that.
Oh, I didn't open it, sorry. Thank you.
You're welcome.
At this time, I would like to open the public hearing for a use variance, for the amendment to the zoning ordinance. Seeing no movement whatsoever, I will go ahead and close that public hearing. Thank you for reminding. Sorry.
Barbara remembered.
Okay. With that, I'll take, any questions, comments, or motion?
Alright. I'm just trying to find the proposed one here.
There is no proposed motion here in our packet. That's okay?
There's no motion?
I'll make a motion that the commission recommend to city council that the amendment to the zoning ordinance to allow the BZA to consider use variances as drafted and propose to council, or to the commission, be recommended to council.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a support. Any other further discussion, questions, comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Go ahead and take it to council.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Alright, next up is old business. No items for old business on the agenda, so we'll bring it to new business. We have a conceptual plan discussion for the former Save-A-Lot site. Is it going to be introduced by Derek?
Yeah, I'd be glad to. I think everybody's aware that the former Save-A-Lot business has been out for quite some time. There's been a lot of activity surrounding the site. We have an applicant here that has control of the property currently. They've had some discussions with the DDA staff and with our city staff, and had asked for the opportunity to come forward and discuss their concept for the site and get feedback from the planning commission. So, we received the plans and the summary letter last week. We're glad to have them here and glad they've taken the opportunity to discuss this before showing up. So, I'll turn it over to them and let them present what it is they want to talk about and see where that goes from there.
Okay, thank you. Welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Roger Basmagian, I'm a resident of Ferndale and president of Basco. We have significant properties that we own in downtown Ferndale that we've developed over the years. And we just acquired the Save-A-Lot property.
Okay.
And we're in the exploratory phase at this point, of seeing what to do with that site. One of the concepts is what you have in front of you today, and that's development that we would do with Mr. Karp, who's got quite a bit of experience in residential development. And at this point, we just want your feedback and your comments and your level of support of what's in front of you and where do you see this going.
Could you kind of quickly talk about what it is you're proposing?
Yes.
What type of use, how many, you know, just the basics of the development, how many units? And they did provide, they seem to have a revised concept. There's four copies of it here, I'm going to hand them down, but it's not something we received ahead of time, so you guys will have to share.
It's pretty similar to what you have before, but we met with the DDA, and it incorporates a little more retail. But what you have should show it there. Thanks for, you know, spending a few more minutes. Hopefully, it'll be quick for you.
We have one or two people. Oh, okay. Oh, sorry. I wanted to buy that. Okay. Say it one more time?
I said hi. Thanks for spending a few more minutes. Hopefully, we won't keep you too long. This is just a concept. We develop different apartments, this modern look. We did one recently in Southfield, and we thought Ferndale would be just an incredible place for it. You have a great little downtown, and you want, you know, it would be nice to see more people. So, we came up with this concept in the former Save-A-Lot. It's approximately 90 units, which is based on the fact that you can have about 90 parking spaces for that lot. And it's small units, which, just down the street are Arbor Lofts and Southfield. We are getting constant, you know, customers, tenants, who are looking for about 1,000 square feet or less. They're looking between $1,200 and $1,300. And a lot of them are working Detroit, they're working in Troy, and some places like that, but they want to live in this area. So, this is what this concept is. Hopefully, you like some of the layouts, but they're based on all the demand. And instead of, you know, running downtown to rent a place, nothing wrong with going down there as well, but this is just another option. And hopefully, it sort of is something you want to see in Ferndale.
Talk about the square footage, the units, price point, parking space, how much commercial you're proposing, just so we have it for the record.
Yeah, the, right now, the units, you see the little floor plans there, about 600 square feet. That is based on, you know, the size that we're seeing people want. The average price that we're looking for approximately is about $1,200 a foot, uh, $1,200 a month. And that's just based on what we're hearing, and we did a couple of market studies. And parking spaces, it's 90 spaces or 91 spaces, it should be written right on there. And we're happy to propose some retail in the front. We do have room for that, if you see some of the updated ones. And that is, you know, not deep ones. They're actually pretty shallow retail spaces. Of course, the parking wouldn't be available really in the building itself or on the property. However, during the day, a lot of the tenants are gone, so we probably could incorporate something like that.
So, you are looking at the first floor retail?
Yeah, on the corner, there's definitely retail. And then...
On the corner only?
No, if you look a little further down, the original drawing, we just had on the corner, and it was all based on discussions with Derek and to see what you want to see. You know, parking is obviously a question in Ferndale. So, this was based on the initial drawing. That's why we're here, to hear your feedback. And then we did another version of it with a little more retail going west, if you see that. And that, you know, we're happy to do even more retail, but then the question is parking. We spoke with Derek about a few different options they do in other cities, about shared parking, even buying some parking permits for some of the residents. Obviously, there's street parking as well. If you go to Chicago and any of the other cities, even Ann Arbor, you know, not everybody gets space, you know, you park on the street. So, I'm sure you don't want to hear necessarily that in Ferndale right now, and hear from the neighbors, but, you know, whatever other options you have, we're happy to hear.
And then, the parking that's proposed, is all surface?
Yes, all surface, yes. And it's screened and hidden from nine mile and from, yes.
And just for the planning commission, the property zone, C2, no, CBD, I'm sorry. Yeah, well, yeah, I'm sorry. CBD, it is, falls under the height requirements. It's limited to 40 feet, as opposed on the other side of Plannavon, which is 70 feet.
50, but it's much larger. We looked originally, we thought it might be 70, but it was 50 on the, here, cut, written documents.
I'll double check.
But I think it's still...
Yes, I am, I apologize, it is 50. Between Livernoy and Plannavon, it's 50. Plannavon to Woodward is 70.
You're proposing 50 feet?
I think, we'll stay just under it. You know, we're not going to ask for a variance for that. As you go higher and higher, it gets much more expensive, and you have to put a lot more concrete. And of course, we don't want to all of a sudden start charging $3,000 a month for apartments. That's not going to help anybody.
And then with residential development in the CBD, they're required to have one space per unit.
Right.
And then the traditional retail requirements apply as well, because it's a new building.
Gotcha. And I see in your sketches here, you have a little roof patio area. Did you look at expanding that to a larger?
We're happy to expand it even bigger. You know, we met with DDA, and that was one of the things that came up. Hey, we'd like to see something up there, and we're happy to do it. The roof can support it. It was mainly to have some place for the residents to go. I don't think we want wild parties out there and, you know, loud music all night, but a nice little patio where they can get some sun and just, you know, have coffee and even have like a possible computer room. In the Arbor Lofts, we have a couple of different areas, but it's a much bigger building. But that's a good spot for it, we think.
Well, it just seems, you know, 90 resident, 90 units with very small accommodations. It seems like an outdoor area would be high, in high demand. And so, you have obviously ample roof space, so I would like to see that utilized to its maximum.
We would love to. We just didn't want to, you know, start proposing things, and it's not something you'd want to see. You know, you're going to, you have the apartments behind, two are the condos, and if we had, you know, 80 lawn chairs there and there was a party going on, I think you, so we're looking for your lead on that.
Okay. I think, I'll open up for discussion, but I think, I think you'll probably get unanimous agreement that this is the direction I think we want to see the city headed in terms of mixed use and increasing the density. You just, obviously, we did the T O, the ordinance, which is a small step, but it was a big step for Ferndale, I think, to make that leap. But I think it was a step in the right direction to getting what we need in terms of people thinking outside of the traditional strip retail mentality, which the Save-A-Lot building obviously is. So, multiple stories is good, mixed use is good.
If we can figure out any parking, I mean, we're happy to go, you know, up to 50 feet. We have to do three stories, but it's just all a matter of how you want to work out the parking. So, whatever suggestions you have. But based on the size of that lot, that's why we came up with 90.
Gotcha.
Through the chair, currently, there's Ferndale Park on your east end of the property. Is that envisioned, is that part, yes, that part of your property? So, is that public? That's going to be remained as a public park?
That is not part of the property, but we've talked to Derek and Christina about trying to incorporate that into the project and expanding some of the green space as well into the project.
Personally, I think we've had this conversation before. I like having green, public green space in our downtown. I would like to keep that not part of a restaurant or part of an outdoor dining, is my own opinion. I like having that as a gathering place for the city. If it's not there, somewhere else within the nine mile downtown area.
Yeah, absolutely. I think we're, our downtown is tight, is that we don't have a lot of public space that is green space. And as part of the DDA's vision is that taking that park and making it more interactive and more of a park. But those are the discussions that I have had, just with Roger as well, as to keeping that still public space, but still flexible space. Similar to some extent, like where you could potentially have a cafe that could flow out during seasonal times, but then also, you know, during most occasions, it is for public use. And maybe not the entire space. It's similar to what we did with the alley behind Dino's and Crave, where you have a public alley with green space and seating area, and we allow for some cafe seating during the season, but it's not for the entire alley area. That alley is still extremely accessible. You have to be able to get all public all the way through it, as well as we worked very closely with the police and fire department to make sure that, you know, if utility vehicles need to be able to get through, that they can still get through in a manner, but it is otherwise closed to pedestrian access. The other thing that we have begun to... Um, the other thing that we have begun to explore is also the alley that, um, is directly behind the building, um, behind the Save-A-Lot building. Um, that alley doesn't lead to anywhere. Um, and, uh, I have met with the fire department on that, uh, and, uh, they are open to the idea of, um, vacating that alley so that we can make that into more of a green space walkable area as well. And figuring out ways to make this a, uh, a connection back into the buildings to some of the original ideas that Roger had, were great ideas to, you know, keep that traffic flowing and keep it really symbiotic to how people move throughout our community as well.
And, and just north of the site, is that the senior?
It is.
Facility, and that's five stories?
Four stories?
Five or six?
So I guess my point, going back to...
Six, I think there's six.
Yeah, in terms of height, I know that height can be scary to some in the downtown area, especially as of recent times. But in terms of, uh, an immediate neighbor, this is the ideal location to put height.
Absolutely.
Eighty height there, and you're not immediately abutting someone's backyard.
And I believe the Housing Commission, um, building is more than the fifty feet.
Yes.
Oh, sure.
Seventy, seventy-five feet.
Yeah, so I would definitely encourage you to max out your, your, your site in this location.
I think some of the other things that I observed and I commented with Roger, um, is that, you know, obviously the need for retail space fronting our, our main sidewalks. We have to keep that continuity going throughout our district, uh, it's very important. Um, people need to see what else is, you know, that there's action happening throughout to keep them walking all the way through. Um, as well as, uh, making sure that we start to, um, begin to talk a little bit more about the, the drive approaches. Because two drive approaches means two points of potential contact or conflict. Um, so looking at trying to minimize those points of conflict, um, and hopefully maximizing the space then for retail space and, and more common, common area type spaces as well.
Through the chair, what type of retail do you envision for, um, I guess that corner? I mean, we're looking at a total of four thousand square feet, um, I don't know, what do you think could fit there?
Small retail, nothing, um, serving maybe the residents on top, uh, maybe a small gym, things of that nature.
Yeah, we briefly discussed, um, you know, the, the parking issue and we, we did not think of having a, like a restaurant with a bar there.
Okay.
And just, and just for clarification and, and, and this isn't to question anybody's intent ever, but just as a reminder to the planning commission, once approved, any of the uses in the CB district, CBD district would be allowable in the space. Um, it's not just, and, and we have no reason to question these gentlemen's intentions and Roger we've worked with for years and know and... But as, as time goes on, uses change and tenants change and signs change. So i- it's important to look at all the uses that are allowed in the CBD district and recognize that when we do approve retail, those are the ones that are considered approvable, um, as long as they achieve the appropriate certificate of occupancy, once it's approved, so...
Uh, through the chair, a question, can, um, you describe the, um, intention of the U-shaped of the building? Um, so the footprint of the building, um, takes away from the actual, um, pedestrian experience and you have a cutout. Can you explain what your intention is there?
Thankfully, I didn't go to architecture school. Um, that was the design of the architect and basically he came up with that, his explanation was, to get the traffic flow, because it is pretty tight there. So if there's a different configuration, it's not an issue, but he also didn't think, based on, uh, all the buildings that are built everywhere else, he wanted just one big rectangle. So that's how he came up with that. But if you have any thoughts or any other comments, we're happy to, you know, do that as well, but he did it based on traffic pattern.
Yeah, if you look at the site plan, it's rather apparent that it's one directional diagonal parking and they need a second access point for that west moving, uh, maneuvering lane off of Nine Mile, they can't... It's not the way it's designed, they can't get it internally. So the U shape is actually designed for, I believe, that driveway, that dimensional driveway, so they can wrap around and get back out, yeah.
It'll be interesting to see how, uh, we've encouraged you to go higher with the actual density and see what that does to your actual parking layout. Um, we are all about the pedestrian and, um, designing our sidewalks for pedestrians and even though we have to balance parking, um, the, the U shape to me is not as attractive as actually having building space fronting the, the sidewalk as zero setback in our downtown. Highly encourage your architect to work with the city and figuring out how we can configure that in a different way.
So tomorrow morning, we'll get right in.
We've spoken to Peter about it already.
Yeah, good, so, no, we're, we're open to anything, I just want to make sure you understand. And as far as height, we're, one of the things we discussed was, um, going fifty feet, having even more units if possible, all retail on the front, but then we have to figure out the parking question.
Parking can be figured out, though, it can be solved.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm open to whatever you, you have to say, but you can get ninety spaces based on the size of the lot. So whatever else we can figure out, we're, we're open, you know, thirty spaces here, twenty here, so whatever your thoughts are, we're, we're open.
I would echo Councilwoman Pianas' thoughts, you know, we talk about how right now, Save-A-Lot's kind of a, a gap in the, in the system in downtown Nine Mile and you're creating, you're creating another gap. And we have that for you to not create a gap. And so, um, to make, as Christina mentioned, to create the experience that keeps you wanting to continue walking to the west or to east, wherever you're heading. I have, there's gotta be a way to do an internal loop and have, you know, maybe, as you mentioned, uh, making use of the alley, if they could vacate the alley, that would give you some additional depth, um, to make some internal maneuvering.
Yeah, push it back.
Right. Cause the intent would be to focus the, the activity at Nine Mile and, and really make that an active wall along its entirety. You could have some dudouts for outdoor seating or to create, to create not just a big rectangle, you know, but I think that's a significant pull.
I also encourage you to, um, go with the DDA director's suggestion of activating that alley. Um, you have an alley that could be a green space behind you and you have a park space to one side, and I think that is a high sell amenity for any resident who would be interested in your, um, living in your, in your building. Um, a, a great, um, example is on Livernoy, the city is entertaining another, um, five-story residential unit on Livernoy and it has a lot of green elements or, um, energy efficiency and, um, greening elements that Ferndale is interested in achieving. So I encourage you to look at how to involve those into your project as well.
So, uh, we're excited about that and that's very similar to what we did in Southfield. Came up with all the greening elements, you know, architects, they love to do solar and the green, we had a greenhouse. And guess who said we don't like it? Not the planning commission, city council. So hopefully, they're following your lead, but that's how we came up with that, yeah. We're happy to have any green space.
Just as a clarification for staff, because we, and as far as staff, I think you understand that Christina and I are in lockstep with everything you're saying, but as far as how to achieve it, there's a couple of ways. One is, you know, there's only so much room on the site. To achieve the commercial, the additional commercial along the street front, there's two, two real possibilities and still maintain enough parking for the residential. One is to lessen the number of residential units, so there's not the parking demand and move those parking requirements to, and assign them to the commercial space. Or keep the density in the number of residential units and the ordinance allows you guys, under certain circumstances, to waive the required parking. And those are two very different things as we go forward. Um, and I'm, for clarification's sake, is the planning commission, or is there, is there a willingness to consider waiving the parking associated with the commercial and allowing it to be all assigned to the residential? And allow the existing, um, public parking to handle the commercial demand? Or do you want to see the site provide the required parking for all of the square footed uses involved? Um, and that can have a significant impact on how we go forward and how we advise them.
Through the chair, oh, go ahead.
Um, through the chair, I would, I would encourage to keep, I like the size of the, the, uh, the units that you have, I like the higher density. Um, and I mean, my question about the retail would just be, um, that I had earlier was just that I would, I'd like to see more of it and I would definitely be for waiving, uh, parking requirements.
Particularly, you said that the retail would be servicing the residents, which suggests that your parking requirements, um, could be lower and you, your retail would be pedestrian, would be a pedestrian draw. So, um, and that's an interesting thing to look at, so I concur.
Yeah, and I think, I, I, I agree, I think of talking about, you know, parking problems that can be solved and obviously there's a lot of talk about parking in Ferndale, but the long-term goal is to get the density. You need the people living and then the more people living, the more people walking, the less need for parking.
Correct.
So, I think, yeah, I think the...
And I, I think using the waiver too, and, and we've talked about it with the applicant, um, we think that could allow for some conditioning of the type of retail to make sure it's residential. Because that is a discretionary approval and not a technical compliance issue. That's one, you could attach conditions potentially and if they're willing to agree, limiting the type of retail to make sure it's the, the type that doesn't add to the, the capacity issues, uh, in the downtown. So that is a possibility as well.
Any other thoughts, questions, things you want to share with the applicant? Did you get your questions answered that you came looking for?
Yeah, I think so, thank you.
I think it's exciting and I think it's the right step for the city. Christine, do you have anything to add in the DDA's perspective?
Yeah, I'm definitely gonna, she's, here you go.
No, I think that, you know, this is definitely the right step and, uh, in the right direction for not only downtown Ferndale, but for that site. Um, you know, this, this has been a building that has been, one that does definitely serve as a whole to the downtown and can really serve as a connector to their, to the west end. Um, building yet again on our, um, overall vision for, for the downtown. So excited to see and, and I'm glad that, you know, Roger, uh, stepped up and, and jumped up and got onto that property, uh, when he had the opportunity to do so. So we'll, hopefully we'll work through, um, what we really, uh, need for that property, uh, and bring something that, back, that will be fantastic.
It's exciting, good luck. So we'll see you next month, okay? Okay, all right, um, agenda. Good, fine. Uh, next up, we have a call to the audience. Anyone in the audience wishes to address the planning commission on any topic? Going once? Twice?
Microphone.
Call the audience, do you have any questions, if we're not, we'll direct you to where...
I'm sure that this is the proper place to ask the question.
Well, we'll tell you if it's not.
Okay. The, the sidewalks in front of my properties are getting really bad. And the curbways are all starting to break up. What I see is lawsuits gonna pop up. What do we do about it? How do we, who do I contact to solve that problem?
Contact, uh, our DPW director, um, and if you don't have the number, I gave you my card, you can contact me and I'll provide...
Got your card, I'll call you later.
Yep.
Yeah, I'll meet tomorrow. Okay, thanks. That's it.
All right, yeah. All right, thank you. Um, any other, call the audience? All right, next up is election of officers. Um, we do have chair and vice chair. Obviously Kate isn't here this evening, our current vice chair, um, and I'll make the, the offer I always make that I think anyone who wants to be chair, feel free. I've been chair for a long time, I'm happy to let someone else take the helm. If not, I'm happy to continue on, um, but yeah. That's all I have to say about that, I guess. And I don't know, did you talk to Kate at all?
Uh, I did not, I did not hear about it.
I don't know if her willingness as the vice chair.
I did not, but I think her absence means that she volunteers, volunteers willingly. Isn't that usually how it works?
That's what I figured you guys would have done already.
Yeah. If we would have had a meeting last week, we would have recommended the same thing for you.
Okay, um, so with that, I guess, any discussion, or we can take some, um, nominations or motions?
I, I would just like to say that, um, your leadership has been, um, outstanding and I am thankful every day for our...
You make fabulous planning commission. You make my job easier on council. Uh, and I, um, appreciate that, um, but, uh, we've got some really tough stuff coming up this year. Um, the planning commission's gonna be very busy and, um, I would favor in you continuing on if you so choose.
So is that a motion?
Yes.
I move.
There's been a motion and support to have...
I'll support that.
Continue as chair. I guess, I'm, I'm fine with that, just recognize that, it's gonna be a hard year for me, so I might be missing more meetings than I normally have then, but when I'm here, I will lead to my best of my ability. I'll make sure I look at the bright agenda. Feature review.
I was about to send off a really nasty email and then I decided to shut.
Anyway, um, so anyway, uh, so there's a motion and a support, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
No problem. And Kate has served as vice chair and has served the last two meetings, so I guess I haven't witnessed her in action, but I've seen...
Always smoked.
You all did and... Motion?
Make a motion to make Kate Baker the vice chair?
Yes.
Yep, vice chair.
I'll second that.
Okay, there's been a motion and support and discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right.
Thank you for continuing on.
No change. Only constant, no change today. Administrative items, what do we got? How's our master plan?
Um, hopefully resolved, as far as the scope of service.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, uh, I, I think it's fair to say that we had waited to see the resolution. Um, the scope of service had changed dramatically over the course of the, uh, the initial negotiations, both with what the city wanted in partnership with the DDA and then some additional projects that were potentially gonna be looked at. Um, and those have now, all, all of those issues have now resolved themselves. Um, we believe what we have is a final scope of service that, uh, the staff will bring forward to city council and make recommendation that they approve. Um, it's kind of an à la carte version of all the different items that will be provided. Um, we can forward that to the planning commission now, we do have it, and expect them to take action probably at their first meeting in May.
So, if I understand you correctly, so it's, uh, in large scope of services?
It is larger than our original RFP intended, correct.
So including master plan, including Parks and Rec and now including DDA elements?
Correct, we have the, the base master plan, we're calling it, um, which was a pretty, um, a pretty aggressive RFP to begin with. Um, there is, the Parks and Recs plan has been rolled into it, which has been expanded in scope since the original RFP. Um, we have met with the city's environmental sustainability committee and there's going to be a sustainability plan and component to it as well, to address some of the concerns they have. Um, we feel the, the master plan is more than the appropriate place for that. And then we have included what we're, basically what amounts to two very specific target market analysis, um, to address some of the questions and concerns that arose over, uh, density and absorption rates in the downtown over the next five to ten years. Um, we've brought on with, uh, Hamilton Anderson originally Gibbs Planning to do some very specific target market analysis in both the downtown. Uh, at least we're recommending that that be included. And then also what we're loosely titling the Innovation District, which Mel was kind enough to come up with the name for. And it's the historically industrial area north of Nine Mile, east of the railroad tracks, west of Hilton, um, almost all the way up to where it comes to a point at the 696 Service Drive. It's an area we're seeing significant change in. Um, it's an area we're seeing a, a lot of interest in more mixed use type development, more creative uses, less standard industrial. Um, so we would like to apply the same type of study and analysis to that area, um, that's been, is being considered for the downtown. And that is actually an absorption study to see what types of uses can be incorporated in that area and supported and how much can the city support. And then characteristics and, and visual studies as to what that would look like and how to implement that. So those two, those two components have been added to the plan as well. They are à la carte items, um, they are expensive, um, but based on the discussions we've had, we feel like it's something that we want to recommend. Um, and that we're gonna try to split the cost of those between multiple resources and budgets within the city. Um, now that we have that all organized, we feel we're pretty comfortable taking that forward to council.
And it's still one process?
Correct.
So you don't wanna burn out from...
Nope, it's one process, it has some significance and we feel pretty creative, public input thoughts in the front of it, we've been pleased with the response we've gotten in that. From the beginning, none of that has changed and we're still very comfortable with the direction we're going. That's all been rounded out and we hope to have it in, and we hope to be up and running by beginning of June here.
And was it like a year timeframe?
I believe it'll be at least a year based on what we're looking at right now, yeah, I do.
Through the chair, if I may, um, we've done significant work on our parks plan. Um, the master, or the parks master plan needs updating, but we are making significant, um, investments in our parks, um, this year, um, that help address some of the needs collected and heard through the mayor's blue ribbon, uh, parks commission. As well as the, um, parks, park and rec department has done surveys. So we've done a lot of outreach in the last three years and we're starting to deliver on what we've heard. Um, and if you all know about May, there is a Streets and Parks Bond renewal, uh, which includes one point two million dollars worth of investment in, uh, improving our parks. Um, and, uh, will improve our streets, so we are making progress to that end. So for me, we aren't like starting from scratch on the master plan process for the parks. So, it's, we've got a lot in play.
It's just the required fiber update from the DDA.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's the sustainability component that really excites me, um, of tying in our land use with susta- sustainability, which is really the direction of modern master plan. which is really the direction of modern master plans. All right, well, exciting stuff.
Hope so. Glad to get it started. We've been talking about it for too long, and looking forward to actually doing it. Did you mention Gibbs will be doing all the target market analysis? Correct. As proposed, as it is right now. Like I said, that all depends on, yeah, it hasn't been approved. Any movement with MISHTA? Are they still at the table, or does that? We've talked to MISHTA extensively and tried to incorporate their placemaking process and share rep processing of the master land use plan process. We met with the head of housing for, and planning for MISHTA and talked about it. Yeah, yeah, and they basically, and to summarize it, based on having, yeah, they offered us an amount of money to incorporate their process into the master plan, and it only covers probably about 10 to 15% of the actual cost of that process. We believe the master plan should evaluate that process, and as part of its recommendations, maybe that's one of the next steps or implementation steps of the master plan, but it would just got, it got too large in scope to wrap, to try to wrap it in at this point, at least from our recommendation. We'd be glad to go back and look at it, but it was, it was a significant cost increase and something we felt that could be evaluated and recommended and then looked at later as an implementation step.
Any other items administratively that we should be aware of?
Can I think of off the top of my head? Oh, I will to add, the, you mentioned that the Livernoy project did, the presentation was made to City Council the other night. I felt it was met with favorable response. Same concerns from the City Council as the planning commission, they'd like to have resident input on it, but they look like they are moving forward with a preliminary PUD. They're showing no reservation about providing that information and starting that process now and not looking for any guarantees of an outcome at the back end. So, we're very pleased with their response, so we expect to see a preliminary PUD and a purchase agreement shortly, and then hopefully have that preliminary PUD in front of the planning commission, if not in May and June for discussion. We'd like to have it here for discussion before the public hearing, so they can round it out before we, before we take that step. So, that should be coming forward shortly as well.
Chair, do you want to add this, CN?
I could, yeah. I don't know, and it's, it's a, it's a grant that we, one of our current part-time planners submitted for, for Fair Park adjacent to the Intermodal facility between eight and nine, immediately adjacent to facility that the city has a long linear park that abuts the facility. It's, it's in good condition, but it needs some cleaning up, and we were able to obtain $25,000 from CN to do, the grant money has to be used specifically for planning, vegetation, and some other things, and then it requires an in-kind match, and we're promoting a, the cleanup of the area between the Intermodal facility and the park. It's been known to harbor rodents and other things. We're going to do a complete cleanup and replant of that to improve the park and then do plantings throughout the park. And it's our hope to implement as a pilot our first above-ground community agriculture type plots, where residents would be able to lease above-ground plots on a yearly basis for a fee, and we're hoping to get 50 of those included in that as a pilot and see if it works. So, we're partnering with EPW to provide the in-kind services and recreation, has agreed to manage the leasing of the plots if we're successful.
Why can't picture where this is?
It's a very narrow linear park immediately adjacent to the Intermodal facility. It's north of.
How do you define it? If you didn't know, it's there.
Yeah, it's hard to find.
I know five.
Fair Street?
Yeah, so if you follow Fair Street north to, at that end, then the park starts right there, and then it moves north along the railroad line, almost to Idaho. And, no, it's not.
Completely unaware of it.
Yeah, I mean, it is, it's a narrow park, but it's something, like I said, the area of it, I won't say it's been, it's been under, under maintained, because it hasn't been, but there's some, there's some screening of vegetation and overgrowth between the edge of the park and the CN facility that we believe have caused some problems over in the neighborhood, and we want to use that, this grant to clean that out and replant it in a more responsible way. So, we were very pleased that it's, we have a new part-time planner, Justin Lyons, who's one-for-one on grant applications now, so he's earned his keep on his first, his first shot. What? You can, you can get up, you don't have to whisper. Not yet, no.
And then just two minutes, I'm just curious, I see whether, any, how's the chickens coming along? Do we have a lot of people doing them?
At any, at any one time, we have between 10 and 15 in applications. Are we up to 20 in some?
So, we've got, 20 people have actually come in and.
Permits, yeah.
A lot of people that do it without permitting.
Yeah, but and we've, and we've had almost zero complaints, whether permitted or not.
With almost.
Bees are nice.
No, actually, I don't think we've had any. I say almost because I'm not aware of all of them, they go to code enforcement, but none of them, I'm not aware of a single complaint over the two years we've done.
Except the complaint from one of the chicken owners, is that they're more expensive than you thought.
Yeah, but no, no code enforcement complaints. In fact, it's helped, because we've been able to put a lot of the owners in contact with each other. We found good examples of the coop and how it works, and it's, it's been almost seamless.
Have you cooperated?
I still haven't got any eggs, but.
Derek?
Yes?
Just very briefly on the Livernoy project again, you said it was presented at City Council. Did the person in that lone house that would be sandwiched in there, did they come to the meeting?
No.
Has anyone like been able to reach out to them or contact them or talk to them about?